The pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. Now for some fun activity. We're going to get the oath of office for our newest alderman, Mr. Frank Jovanini. You've got to come in here and join us. We get to do it twice, so pay attention. Hi Frank. Yes. Frank, raise your right hand.
I.
Your name?
Frank Jovanini. Having been appointed to the office of City of Pontiac Alderman, I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of Alderman to the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Yes.
Now again, oath of office. I. And your name? As a member of the Pontiac Civic Center Authority Board, I solemnly swear that I will support the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of Illinois, and that I will faithfully discharge the duties of board member according to the best of my abilities. Congratulations. Please sign, and you get one, and one stays here. Yeah, two of each. Thanks Frank. Thank you. You want to join back in there?
Sure.
Thanks again. And now, before we start it, when we have the roll call, and folks, if you'd please unmute yourselves. It'd be great because we're going to go into the roll call now. Cherry, if you had the roll call please. Oh. I forgot you had to go out in the other room.
It says it's muted.
No, you're good.
Okay.
Roll call please.
Barr.
Here.
Jovanini.
Here.
Echo. Callis.
Here.
Hauser.
Here.
Hicks. Bradshaw. Myers. Abber.
Here.
Billy.
Here.
Did everybody here, are you okay?
Yes.
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 Moving on. We have the Civic Center Authority meeting. Having no business before Civic Center, we will close that meeting and move on to the consent agenda. I could have a motion on that.
I motion consent agenda acceptance. Kelly.
I'll second it. Jamie.
By Kelly, second by Jamie. Unmute yourselves for another roll call please.
Echo.
Yes.
Callis.
Yes.
Hauser.
Yes.
Hicks.
Bradshaw.
Yes.
Myers.
Yes.
Abber.
Yes.
Willie.
Yes.
Barr.
Yes.
Jovanini.
Yes.
Thank you. Moving on to the regular agenda. Taylor. Hopefully you're listening.
I am.
It was a request from even Henry to address the council, but he hasn't logged in. Do you want to give a synopsis of what he was talking?
Sure. Yeah, so Mr. Henry, I think, reached out to some of you as well as Bob and the mayor. Just expressing some concern over the whole registration process for the ice rink and Mr. Henry thought that there were times where it felt a little bit unfair as far as when we posted it and how. So, long story, we we went through, when we first went through for the registration for the ice rink, we posted the entire month. And at one time, it filled up really, really quickly within 24 hours. So, after talking to Mr. Henry and hearing some of his concerns, we came to the agreement that we post it one week at a time, and that might get people some more opportunities or chances just in case they missed the the posting right away. So, I'm thinking since, you know, we came to that conclusion, maybe that's why he's not on, but I think he was happy by the time we got off the phone.
Are you happy with that Taylor?
Yeah, it's fine. And I told him it doesn't matter on our end because no matter what, we still have to input the dates and the times. It's just how many Facebook posts we got to do. So it, it doesn't bother us any. It's the same process. And if it gives people more opportunities, you know, potentially to catch the post if it goes out, then that's okay with us. It's not a big deal on our end.
It was Mr. Henry's objection just because he it was, it was reserved for a whole month at length and you couldn't get anybody else in?
Yeah, and partially that, but also he works two jobs. So he felt like that since we posted it one time, then, you know, if he missed that chance that one time, then, you know, he kind of felt left out. So, if we're posting now four times a month instead of one, he has four times the amount of opportunity to try to catch that post. So, we're posting it at different times. So this one's going to go out at eight o'clock tonight. So, we're trying to, you know, make it work for everybody and hopefully we'll, we'll do that the best we can because it's not going to be perfect. You know, no matter what, there's going to be people that are working. There's going to be people that aren't going to be able to get on, simply because we can only have 10 per hour. So.
I had, I had a question. I had some, some people who were who wanted to come down and visit. I told them like they couldn't at this point because of my COVID restrictions. However, they, we did get talking about the, the ice rink and they said, man, I'd like to just come down and do that. How are we handling out of towners that spontaneously might want to come in?
Yeah, so we've actually come into that scenario a little bit here where, you know, sometimes people don't show up and we've actually had staff take down their name and number and then we will actually call them and say, hey, you know, somebody didn't show up for this timeframe and they'll, they'll pop up. Since they're in town or they're close by, they can hurry up and get over there before that hour time slots up. So if people do, you know, want the opportunity and let's say there's not a waiting list, we can take their name and number and we can call them if something opens up. And that's, it's actually happened a couple of times and it worked pretty well.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
I have B is the third quarter financial review.
Well, let's turn the clock back about a year. About this time, we started working on the budget. We had a series of committee of the hall meetings where we heard from department heads. We formulated a budget. I'm going to get screen up here. Let's go to directly. So we formulated a budget and then council approved the budget and then COVID hit and it was through everything into a great deal of uncertainty. So tonight, what we're going to do is
They can't.
I think I'm going to have to go ahead and put everybody on mute. We're getting a lot of cut out from that room, so I'm going to mute all right now.
So as we look at the city's budget, we're going to jump back a little bit. We have five basic categories of funds. And the first one is the general fund, which is the basic operating fund of the city. You'll see that under the general fund, we have the accounting for the police fire administration, streets, street lights, police fire commission, ESDA, cemetery, building maintenance, and we're throwing parks and community centers in there while they're special revenue funds. They rely on subsidies from the general fund, so, so that's in there as well. So as we mentioned, last year, we approved a budget, an operating budget in that second column of numbers there of 7.2 million of revenues and 7.264 of expenses. Again, as we mentioned, COVID hit and there's a great deal of concern about what the impact on the city revenues, particularly we're going to be, to a certain extent on expenses, what exactly was going to entail in that. And so we researched all sorts of different scenarios. If you remember at the time, economists were talking about the V-shaped recovery, the U-shaped recovery, the W-shaped recovery, and all those had real significant impacts on the, the potential impacts on the city. So what we did is looked at our revenues that the impact on revenues for the recession of 2008. That was what was called the U recession, went down and then went sideways for a long period of time and then gradually came back up. Took almost three to four years to get back to the revenues that we had at the time. We thought that that was that a kind of probably be the worst case scenario. And so we used that revenue projection to then build an amended budget up high. What we did is a couple of things to create this amended budget. We kind of really put a brakes on capital improvements with exception of those that we really needed to do. And it would really brought in spending as best as we could. The other thing we did is we brought in about $600,000 from other funds to the general fund to help offset any losses that we would get. You'll see then that we had with this amended budget, 6.7 million of revenues and 6.9 million of expenses. We cut basically close to 300,000 out of the expenses, which was still going to leave us a deficit of 266,000, but we thought that that was manageable, that we didn't want to jump in right away and make more drastic cuts and reduce services and see how this played out. One of the problems that we had was that many of our revenue streams had a three months lag to it. And so here it was in April and we weren't really going to know what the impact of what April's revenues were until July. So we're kind of flying blind, but kind of use this as our, our guidepost to operate from. So we have the amended budget there in the middle, middle column. And then we created off of that a cash flow, flow projection on the yellow column, which is the last column. And based upon that projected cash flow budget, we anticipated being at these levels at the end of the third quarter, which is the end of December. These are not our final numbers, but they're real close to what, where we're going to end up. So to kind of see where we're at today and what has happened, we really need to compare the yellow column to the green column, which is the actual revenues and expenses that we have gotten during this first three quarters. That's one. Just hearing in on a few of the revenues, you'll see the first one, the first three that are highlighted are state revenues that are distributed on a per capita basis. So there's no relevancy to the performance of these three revenues based upon what's happening in Pontiac. These are all statewide based on a per capita basis. You'll see in all three cases, the projections are much lower than what the actual expenditures were or receipts were. Income tax is ahead about 250,000. Replacement tax is ahead about 40,000. And the Illinois use tax, which is basically where a good chunk of the internet sales happened, is up by about 80,000. So those are the three areas that we really thought were going to be impacted the greatest by the overall potential economic losses for the state. If you go to the bottom, towards the bottom, there's the transfers and force accounts where we added that 600,000 in. And of course, we're right where we're supposed to be on that. The grants you'll see is way ahead and that's mainly because of the $495,000 of cure funds that were allotted from the state. All of those bunnies are in now. The largest single general fund revenue is the sales tax and you'll see that that is considerably way ahead of where we projected it would be as well. This is a purely locally driven revenue source. The sales tax is generated within the corporate limits is those that were received. So let's dive in a little bit to see what's been happening with the sales tax. Again, we talk about that second quarter, calendar quarter, April, May, and June of sales that we got received for in September or July, August, September. And you'll see that general merchandise for that quarter was up six and a half percent. Food, as you would expect, was up 12% because people weren't able to go out and eat. Drinking and eating was down 15%. And the other significant one was automotive. This is really significant when we're receiving sales to our motor fuel tax money, which is indicative of what's happening in the filling stations of down between 20 and 30%. And so drugs and retail down a little bit, agriculture down a little bit. But for the quarter, we were down, we're up six tenths of a percent. And statewide was down about 15% during this time. So, so our local economy performed pretty well. Next quarter rolls around and general merchandise is down a little bit, food's still strong. We saw drinking and eating turn around mainly because of not only the drive-through, but that's the implementation of the outdoor dining. And you'll notice the big spike in automotive and filling stations. And again, this is somewhat contrary to what we were seeing with the motor fuel tax. Let's stay and look at the combined two quarters. So here are the combined two quarters, April through September. And food, of course, is up, drinking is down, automotive filling station is up 13 and a half percent for an increase of 4.3% across the board for the quarter. Considering to what we had budgeted in our cash flow budget, you know, this is very healthy. Let's dive down a little bit to the automotive and filling station. Keep in mind this category is title vehicles, auto parts, and gasoline sales. So it hit me that, you know, as we talked about sales tax in the past, that the local option, sales tax is exempt from, or titled vehicles are exempt from that. And that's the case with education. So what I did is I went to the education sales tax and said, okay, in their automotive and filling station, title vehicles are not there. So you'll see for that first quarter in 2019, we had total sales tax of 289,000. And 83,000 of that was the education sales tax, which excluded title vehicles. So we backed that off of the 289 and we have $206,000 of sale entitled vehicles. Title vehicles being cars, RVs. The other thing that happened during this period of time is there was a change in how the state was assessing sales tax on used vehicles. And so don't know what the total impact is in those directions. But, so that's kind of giving us an idea of where it went. So in terms of that first quarter, you'll see that we had a 28% decline in the non-titled sales in that category, which is pretty reflective of what we were seeing with state motor fuel tax receipts. And we had a 16.5% increase in titled vehicles. We get to the second quarter and it just explodes. The total sales tax was up 24%. However, the non-titled sales in that category was 9% and the titled sales was up 39%. So while this is encouraging, not sure how sustainable that is moving forward, but certainly has provided a substantial lift during this fiscal year. And then for the two months combined, total increase of 13.5. Non-titled vehicles down 19% and the titled vehicles up 27%. Let's go to one more slide. So then as we look at putting in the ranking those out for the overall categories, automotive is up 16, that's the titled sales. Fuel and parts is down 28%. And then the same way all the way through the second quarter and then the combined two quarters. Any questions on that? You're all muted, so if you're trying to say something, we're not hearing you. Well, I wish I had one of those at home and at the office, but.
I think Bob, that the automotive is probably highly attributed to RV sales.
I think that's a big, big chunk. And again, how sustainable that is moving forward is up in the air, but, but it certainly has really provided a shot in the arm for us.
It's a growing trend.
Yes. Along that line, Roger Brooks, the consultant that we use or listen to a lot to tourism, said that that's the major trend in tourism is RV travel and that communities that are ready for that are going to be ahead of the game. So it's not only reflective in that, but then also the usage of it.
We sure seem to see a lot of them parked at city hall this past summer.
Yeah, and that's just a tip of the iceberg.
I would agree.
So so this is kind of a category that has really saved us and has provided us tremendous relief. Again, we'll have to do a little deeper diving to see exactly what the implications are moving forward. But there are some areas for growth. Once the virus has passed us, that fuel and parts, that's going to go back to normal and that's even going to grow with, with Wally's. That's the category that we'll be seeing a substantial part of Wally's sales in. And certainly in drinking and eating, that's got a lot of room for growth as well. So very positive. Particularly when we look at what the implications were for the total Illinois communities. And I think that that's reflective of very few of them have RV sales. And I think that that's a major contributing factor to this. Okay?
I'm kind of surprised that drinking and eating isn't down more.
I am too.
I mean, if you hear the, the talk, it seems like everybody's lost a lot of business, but you look at that and, I mean, somebody's still getting it.
Yeah, and that of course is looking at, at the whole, and I suspect that there's a lot of individuals within that that are, that are really suffering. I think that, you know, you can drive some through or drive around, see some of the fast foods where they have long lines almost continually, that that's a major contributor. So, so let's move on now. We kind of looked at the revenues. You'll see that we thought we were going to be at the end of this quarter at 5 million, a little over 5 million. And we're at 6.2. Based upon our cash flow budget, we're going to get about 1.7 in the last quarter. And so that's going to put us up close to 800, 8 million in terms of actual receipts, which is higher than we had budgeted. But of course, that doesn't account for that, the transfers are in there as is the almost $500,000 of cure money. So, but, but we're going to be having strong revenues. So we're now going to look at the expenditure side of things. Again, if you look at the third quarter where we expect to be, now we would hope that the green column is going to be less. We wanted the green column to be more. On the revenue side, we want the green column to be lower. And I think as you go through all of, through the departments, I've got to put a shout out to our department heads and to our departments, that they've really taken this whole process seriously. They've really watched their budgets this year. Really expended money when they needed to. And so you'll see that we expected to be at about a $200,000 deficit. A combination of the revenues, we expected to be at $200,000 deficit and we're at a surplus of 1.2 million. So, uh, again, the combination of careful spending and stronger than anticipated revenues, transfers, the, uh, the Cures Grant has, has really put us in a, uh, good position entering the fourth quarter. Just running through the departments, unless there's something that you want to, uh, land on, we'll just run through quickly. Um, administration, you'll see we're right, right there. Uh, some of our expenses, you'll see community development is, is higher. This lane is higher. That's attributed to, uh, census, um, expenditures that we received a grant for. That's also the direct mail pieces and other COVID-related stuff that, uh, we expended money for. But still, at the end of third quarter, we're right where we need to be. Uh, cemetery, uh, pretty much the same. Uh, building and sidewalk, uh, right there. Uh, street department is, is about thirteen thousand under where we projected that they would be. Uh, fire department's right, uh, right there as well. And, uh, the star is the police department that, uh, you'll, you'll see that they're about a hundred and sixty, uh, three, yeah, a hundred and sixty thousand to the good. That's major contributing factor is we were, uh, short some officers and the academy was closed and so we couldn't send the officers. But, uh, now they've been on the street, uh, savings are reflected in, in our cash position. And then our three small, um, uh, department, street lighting has done and police, fire commission are, are both okay. Uh, boo, any questions on that portion of the general fund? We will dive in deeper, uh, to these departments, uh, as, as we work on next year's budget and have more detail as exactly, uh, where the expenditures were this year. Any questions, comments?
Hopefully, hopefully, Bob, we can, uh, continue on that trend of trying to, uh, maximize our dollars in future years and...
Yes.
Um, if we can do it one year, maybe, maybe it's more achievable others as well, even if we have money.
And, and again, these are still uncertain times. And, uh, we, we do not see the end of, uh, the virus yet. We don't know what the long-term implications on the economy are going to be. There, there's just a whole host of unknowns and being in a strong position will help weather those. The other thing is we still have the whole pension things and, and this certainly helps as well. One area that, uh, has really taken a beating is, of course, is the revenue, uh, from the community center. That, uh, at this time of the year, we should have been, um, uh, well over two hundred thousand, but since it hasn't been open for a good chunk of that time and when it is open, it's, uh, really, uh, been minimal in terms of revenue. And so this has had, uh, another impact on the general fund. But, uh, things are coming back. Programming, uh, tumbling has really been, um, a real important addition. And as we look at next year, uh, this will be an area that we'll be, uh, spending a lot of time. So while revenues were down, a good portion of our, uh, expenses was overhead that continued on. So you'll see that, uh, we're going to end up the year, uh, with about a two hundred and sixty thousand dollar deficit, uh, that the general fund will have to cover, uh, which is reflected in what we looked at already. Uh, but so that's kind of where one of the, um, impacts have been. Then that moves over to the, uh, park fund, uh, and that's mainly, the revenue stream there is mainly property tax. And so the impact has not been as great there because of course property taxes are paid. So that's kind of the general fund, the fiduciary funds are the police pension, fire pension. We've heard that story. Uh, we won't spend a lot of time there. The next is special revenue, but just looking at that, again, just a reminder that, uh, almost ninety percent of property taxes are, uh, spent in those four funds. Again, the reason we have all of these funds are the, uh, we're a political subdivision of the state of Illinois and the state tells us how we can raise our money and to a certain extent where it should be spent. And so all of these various funds have individual revenue streams that we have to give separate accounting to because they are, uh, dedicated to a particular use. The other special revenue is just, again, just to highlight a couple of them. Number one, tourism has really taken a, uh, revenues have really taken a hit. That's down over fifty percent. And, uh, as we look at that, we really haven't seen any signs of that coming back yet. Uh, and, um, the rest of the, uh, uh, special revenues have a property tax component to them and, uh, have, uh, maintained okay. Enterprise fund is the sewer in the airport. Uh, those are funds where their revenue stream is acting like a business, that they stay in there and if we ultimately, uh, have a golf course, that will be an enterprise fund where the, uh, revenues that are generated by the golf course will pay off the expenses and the debt of the golf course. So those are called enterprise funds where they're treated as a business. And then the last category is the capital improvement fund. And, uh, mentioned motor fuel tax has really taken a substantial hit. I just don't want to highlight the TIF one and TIF two. Um, we've tried a couple of times to, uh, at the sales tax referendum. And one of the driving forces is, is that, you know, presently between those two TIF funds, we get over two billion dollars a year. And a substantial portion of the street work, economic development work, capital improvement work that has taken place in this community over the last thirty years has come out of these two funds. And we've talked about it many times and there's two years left in those funds. And then at the end of that period of time, there's a two million dollar hole that, uh, is going to be there and lesson is replaced with some. And, and the reason that the sales tax is always chosen as the, the replacement for that, the main factor is, is that with rough calculations, over seventy-five percent of the revenues that are generated from that sales tax are paid for people who live outside of the community. If we look at other sources of revenues, uh, that we could supplement and replace that with, they're all paid within the confines and the city limits of the city. So, uh, we've talked about that. We're getting closer to that sunset. And if we're going to put, uh, the TIF or the, uh, sales tax on the ballot, we're going to need to take action at the next council. So, uh, that's kind of a picture of overview of where we're at. Uh, it kind of gives you an idea of really what's been happening this past nine months, kind of what's going to be happening the next three months. It kind of gives, uh, a framework to talk about next year's budget as we move forward. Thoughts on the, uh, referendum?
Reminder, you're all muted.
I don't know, I like you, but I think we should do it.
Everywhere you go, it's higher sales tax than us. Not that that makes it right, but it's, it's, it's a lost opportunity that most people won't bat an eye at because they, they aren't even, I don't pay attention to what I pay for sales tax places.
The other important thing is with, with all, and hopefully with, uh, the recovery, tourism will, will shoot back up again. And the majority of, uh, increased sales tax is going to be paid by people that don't live here.
We will have that resolution at the next council meeting and then, uh, for your consideration.
I think we all feel like it's an important aspect of what we're going to be doing over the next several years.
That'll be on April ballot, Bob? That'll be on the April ballot if approved by the council?
Yes, yes.
And if we're going to take care of the potholes in the city, this is about the only way we can do it.
Well, you know, um, keep in mind, uh, we get about four hundred thousand in motor fuel tax money, uh, in a overlay of street between thirty-five and forty-five thousand. Reconstructed street with storm sewer approaches on thousand. So we're, the motor fuel tax that's generated really is, doesn't cover a lot. Like I mentioned, a lot, so much of the street work that's been done over the past thirty years has been done with TIF funds. But for those, uh, really would be a bad situation.
I think we've got a good story to tell with the, uh, sales tax referendum and we'll have to move ahead with it. It'll take a little more work to get it passed, but I think we're up to it.
Do we, do we know if any other bodies are going to be asking for this on the April ballot? I, I think that kind of hurt us last time because the schools were asking for it as...
They have until the twenty-ninth of January to file.
Do we know if anybody has yet?
I do not know.
I still think we should do it, but I, I do think that the schools asking for it at the same time hurt us last time.
Well, at the next meeting, the resolution will be before us and we'll have any details of what may be on the outside agenda to work with too.
People would stop and... I'm sorry, no.
Having that, Chief Wolford has, uh, a little, uh, force certification that he'd like to talk about. Chief, are you happy?
I am, I am. I'm able to speak without moving my mouth, if you can tell. Um, so last year, uh, the president signed an executive order on June sixteenth. It was an executive order on safe policing for safe communities. It was the administration's response to real and perceived misuse of force incidents that, uh, gained national attention. Executive order ties specific agency actions to eligibility to receive any federal funds such as grants, uh, from the community-oriented policing, which is when we get grants, the majority of them come from there. Uh, JAG grants, Department of Justice grants and any other federal funding that, uh, comes, uh, to the states through points of contact or directly to agencies. So as a requirement to stay certified, to be eligible for those funds, the federal government required that every police agency must certify two criteria on their use of force. The first being that the use of force application and policy must follow federal, state and local law. And the second being that chokeholds are prohibited unless the use of deadly force is authorized. Um, and that's the specific to obstructing the airway, not necessarily a lateral vascular neck restringers, difference between the airway and then the, um, carotid artery. So with those two things, they then designated agencies throughout the state to do the certifying in Illinois. It was the Illinois Association of Chiefs of Police, um, law enforcement accrediting body, uh, that was given that task for Illinois. So every agency had to, that wanted to continue being eligible, had to make application to them for a fee, of course. And, um, we had to make those certifications that, well, first of all, our policy, uh, we last updated it in mid-two thousand twenty and that was done to address, uh, duty to intervene, which was a, a pretty, uh, significant topic that was, that had been going around that we do, but we didn't necessarily have it in, on paper. So the duty to intervene was, uh, response to, uh, an officer has a duty to intervene if another officer is improperly using force. So we added the language in there. Um, we already had at that time, uh, since I've been the chief, we've always had in our policy that our policy follows state and federal and local law. And then, uh, the second was chokeholds. And in two thousand and fifteen, if you recall, the state of Illinois passed a statute that banned the use of chokeholds. And so our policy addressed that statute since two thousand and fifteen. So pretty easy for us to get certified. Um, and that, however, uh, you know, I think one of the important things that take from this process, I, I guess there's two aspects to think about. The Department of Justice didn't just ask about use of force. There was a whole host of conversations that the Department of Justice opened the discussion on. However, those were the only two mandatory topics. Some of the other topics that they are, and are probably coming at some point, um, are adherence to constitutional standards, termination of the use of force, that's, um, de-escalation, uh, duty intervene, training protocols, use of force, appropriate medical care, to warn before shooting, shooting at or from moving vehicles, warning shots, no-knock warrants, which is gaining a lot of attention right now. Early intervention systems, uh, which is, uh, finding officers who could become problem officers before they become problems. Um, hiring personnel, it's a gigantic topic. Um, community engagement and, uh, another, and a few others now. So the Department of Justice asked us to address all of those, but to be certified, we only had to address those two. At this point in time, I didn't address the other ones. Although we addressed most of them in our policy, I didn't feel it was appropriate to address them because I felt like, um, as, in the same way, you know, we're, we're being legislated by an executive order instead of statutes, I didn't necessarily think that that was the right forum for, for us to, to do at that time. So we did our certification and we passed. And, uh, you know, just a quick final note, if I may, I have to find it real quick, I'm sorry. In addition to those things, the state of Illinois has been ahead of the curve in, in these topics for a long time. As of right now, our officers are required to have a whole host of different trainings. And I'm just going to briefly run through a quick list of those. Some of those are every year that we have to have, um, use of force, legal updates, uh, scenario-based training, uh, chiefs have to have twenty hours additional, um, narcotic detection for canines, they have to be certified and we have to firearms qualify, qualify. Every three years, civil rights, constitutional proper use of law enforcement authority, cultural competency, human rights, procedural justice, trauma-informed response for sexual assault and abuse, mental health awareness training, officer wellness, reporting child abuse and neglect. Every four years, lead homicide investigators have to have thirty-two hours. And school resource officers, this is a new requirement. You have to be certified by the state to be in a school as a school resource officer. Uh, for that one, there's no specific training that we're going to need. Um, we just need to file a waiver that we meet the criteria, which we do. And then every five years, psychology of domestic violence. And then there's federal requirements, bloodborne pathogens, CPR, hepatitis B vaccinations, fire extinguisher training, hazmat training, um, NIMS and, um, a whole host of other things. Crisis, crisis invents in intervention teams. events in intervention teams, alcohol compliance, juvenile officers, school resource officer, again, sexual assault investigators, and standardized field sobriety testing for those types of things. So, we already, and, and our officers, the Training and Standards Board tracks all those things, and all of our officers are compliant with every single one of them, which puts us way ahead of most agencies. I, I know plenty of officers who have told me that, chiefs that have told me that they're fighting to get all that training done, and we've just always been able to get it done, and our officers know what they have to do, and they do it. We have a very good training culture at the department. So, one last note. In December of this year, the Commission on Policing, which the president established in 2019 to look at policing issues, they finished and finalized their report, which is available online. And I thought it was interesting to note that in the executive summary, the number one greatest reason for use of force by police is that individuals do not respect or comply with lawful commands and take their grievances to the courts. And I think we all probably recognize that, that use of force can be greatly decreased if people would just comply and take their grievances to the court. So, our challenge now is to continue to work to get people to recognize that compliance is their best option, and that the courts are there for them to have their grievances heard. And I'd answer any questions if anybody had them.
Congratulations, good job.
Thank you.
Kudos, I have a sec.
Outstanding force and people for the, and they've done a great job in keeping us at a high level, there's no doubt to that. And saving to the last, we have Taylor.
Yeah, I'm, yeah, I'm still here, okay. So, I want to share my screen, so I'm going to have a little PowerPoint, and I'll keep it, you know, as brief as I can. And I apologize about, my memo is a little long, but I wanted to make sure that you guys were aware of, you know, kind of where we're at and where we need to go. So, that's the reason for the long memo. But, I want to, you know, first get into, you know, technology is changing, and it's, it's really, as technology changes, so does our expectations as consumers. And, you know, the public already expects a lot out of us, and as you can see here in some of the examples, these are some of the biggest things that we've heard as far as limitations in our offerings, what we're able to do. But this is what they expect out of us, being able to sign up and pay for programs and services online, making facility reservations online, something we currently can't do. You know, email and text notifications, those are big nowadays, you know, going directly to them, that's big. An interactive master calendar, so that is something that is, would be very, very helpful for us right now, that we're not able to, you know, field schedules, you know, rec center, so many different things that could fall under. Really, being a one-stop shop for memberships, programs, rentals, you know, schedules again, and, you know, again, having control over their information, that would be something that people are looking for and expect in the year 2021. This is what we currently use. So this is our software system that we currently use is called Gym Assistant, and this is what we've used since the year 2000, when the rec center opened. There have been very minimal updates to our software system, and the key word I want us to look at is gym, in Gym Assistant, and that's what it's meant for, is strictly a gym. And, you know, we are so much more than a gym. As you guys can imagine, we're, I'm going to go into the next slide about that. You know, we're, we're more than just one facility now as a rec center, we're managing multiple throughout town, which you can see on this slide. So this is everything that the Parks and Recreation Department is responsible for. So we obviously have our rec center, that's where we're at right now, and that's what it was used for in the very beginning, you know, but we're doing over 100-plus programs and events every single year. We've talked throughout the year about Block 59 and what that programming might look like. You know, this would be helpful for that, we have an indoor pool, the ice rink, and this, really, the ice rink has really caught our attention with this. With our reservation system, we're having some limitations on what we can do on our website, and we've kind of maxed out what that is, and it's not really meant for reservations. So we're doing everything that we can. It's just, we're, really, we're not meeting people's expectations of us. And our department, especially right now, has a lot of momentum, and we need to have the tools to really maximize that user experience, and really just provide the best customer service possible. You know, we need production that matches their enthusiasm, and they're, they're getting frustrated with us, and quite frankly, I understand why. So, with all of these facilities and things that we're managing, you know, there's all sorts of reports that we're doing by hand. You know, I just want to go through, what are some of the things that Lori Gould and Shannon Harbach and myself, what we're doing by hand right now? The recreation center membership, so if somebody wants to have a rec center pass, they have to physically come into our lobby, or they have to call us over the phone, and we can either take payment, but ultimately, we want to verify that that's the type of pass that they want, so they have to come in and sign a piece of paper. And then, when that piece of paper goes into a manila folder, which goes into a big filing cabinet, and we have hundreds, I'm not even kidding, hundreds of these. Reservation, same thing, it has to be done on paper, we can't do it over the phone, they can't see what we're able to offer. So it's really, really frustrating for the user. Programs, you know, this is another thing, you know, like I talked about earlier, they want to be a one-stop shop. You know, not only can you not pay for your rec center pass online, you can't pay for a, like Bob mentioned, a tumbling class. All of that has to be physically done in person, which, you know, not only, it's, it's hard for our staff, but it's also hard for the end user as well. And you can imagine, you know, some of these, the point-of-sale inventory, Lori today was just working on our concession stand, and here at the rec center, and she's physically counting how many things we have left of each item, because we don't have the software capable to count that for ourselves. So, you know, all of these, calling participants, that's another one. We had weather cancellations for our leagues or an event, we've had instructor emergencies, changing of dates. So, for example, we had to cancel mother-son date night, we had to physically call close to 200 people. Daddy-daughter, you know, that's close to 600 people. And, you know, there's, there's some real complications with not being able to send out that email or text notification. So, the biggest thing, we want to be able to work smarter, not harder. So, how do we get to where we want to be? It's this thing called Civic Rec, and I want to kind of take us back and take a step back to understand what that actually is. So, on our website, if you go to Pontiac.org, Civic Plus is the company that actually manages and designed our website, Pontiac.org. And within that, we have, you know, our departments, you see all those headers there, you know, police, fire, you know, streets, maintenance, engineering, our library info's on there. And it's really meant for one-way communication, where ours, we really needed to be interactive. Because the point that I really want to make is, you know, people are paying us because they want to, not necessarily because they have to. You know, it's not a garbage or sewer payment, it's because they want to spend their money with us. So as technology has evolved, so has Civic Plus, and they've actually created a sub-little department called Civic Rec, and that is specifically for Parks and Recreation Departments in mind. And Civic Rec checks a lot of the boxes of what we're needing. You know, I've done extensive research, and, you know, this is what I think we need in order for us to, to kind of move to that next phase and really help people, and our staff as well. So I want to do a quick side-by-side of what Gym Assistant offers, what Civic Plus offers, and then what Civic Rec offers. And you guys can kind of see where we're at currently. So, right now, online payments, we're not able to do that through Gym Assistant. Now, you can see on there, we're allowed to have online recreation center memberships, that is the only thing that we're able to do with Gym Assistant. We can't pay for programs, we can't do point-of-sale inventory. Civic Plus, very limited on what we're able to offer as well. But you can see Civic Rec checks every single box with the limitations that we're having in our operations right now. So it's a really, really great product, and, you know, it's just, this is what we're needing. And one of the biggest things that I want to touch on is, the less interaction, it saves us more money. So, why is less interaction so important? ICMA, they did a study, and they were kind of comparing the communication channel with how much that costs per transaction. So you can see, the more interaction we have with our customers, the more it actually costs us as a department. And the walk-ins, the web chat, the live phone agent, and somewhat of an email right now, those are what we're all doing currently. The phone self-service and the web self-service online, we're not able to do that with our current software. So again, the less interaction, the more money that we're saving. And, you know, not everybody wants that interaction. You know, there's some that do, but there's some due to time limitations and ease of access, they don't necessarily want to come to our lobby and sit in here and wait and pay for programs and services online. And, you know, we kind of talked about it, Bob did earlier, about, you know, COVID-19 and what that culture, or that really was going to, how long it's going to be, we don't know. And some of the things that I can kind of touch on with COVID-19 benefits is having those minimal touch points, and that's less time spent in our facility, contactless payment, so not passing back the credit cards or the cash, back and forth. You know, right now, we're having a limit on the maximum number of participants. So we see that the ice rink, we had at the splash pad this summer, our programs have limitations on it, and even the recreation center, we're kind of maxed out at what we can offer right now. Contact tracing efforts that only help, help the health department. And, you know, I go back to, you know, kind of the refunds and credits on an earlier slide, but that's been a nightmare for us. Because with our recreation or center passes, we can't really tell who has an active pass and who doesn't. So we kind of just have to wait till the people come in in order to give them credits or refunds. Same thing with programs and special events, it is an absolute nightmare to personally hand-call every single person and give them the money back, where a simple software update would be able to do that for us. So, a lot of information, but, you know, what is Civic Rec willing to do for us, what can it do? Provide a better customer experience, it's saving staff, customers' time, it's saving space, we don't have so much paper. We talked about the taxpayer money that it'd be saving for us, having easier access to valuable data and insights. Our data will be more secure, and hopefully it'd increase registrations. Everything that I've read, it will, streamlined marketing and promotional efforts would also be improved. So, for the payments, so this is where it kind of dives into the numbers. This is, for years one and three, it's going to be a little bit more expensive, simply because there is an extra three months that we would be able to get billed, that we're going to be spreading over those years one through three, as well as implementation costs. They're going to be able to import our current memberships, so there's some additional fees there. But then, once we hit year four and beyond, it's going to be right at that 7,300 number per year. And I kind of broke it down so you guys could see what it'd be per month and then per day. And one of the things that, you know, we've really dived into and looked at is, you know, the current things that we offer. And if you guys remember, a couple of years ago, I came to you about the, the fitness theater and the cycle studio, and, you know, due to COVID and, you know, other competition, it's just not getting the use as, you know, what we're spending for it, as what we thought. So, we're still going to keep the cycle studio, but we're going to be able to offer a little bit of things that were different, either through YouTube videos or other free programming, where they can still get their needs met. But we won't have that extra expense every single year. So that's how we want to try to offset this cost here. So it, it's, you know, this is the most important part of our department, I would think. And this is where we really need to help, it's technology, and we're, we're expanding. But our data and our, really just the information that we're able to get is, is not expanding. And so that's, is there any questions at all that you guys might have for me? I know that was a lot of information I just threw at you, but is there any questions at all I can try to answer?
I have a couple of questions, Kelly.
Sure.
The CPA, what is that?
So that is, that's all that implementation, them setting up the new website for us, that's only for years one through three. And then, once we hit year four, we could have had that all up front, but I thought it would be better to spread it up over the years. So it really could have been all up front, but we decided to move it over all three years.
So CPA is Civic Plus?
Yeah, exactly. Yep, yep.
How about, have we, I would assume that we're going to be taking payments online through some sort of credit cards, are we using, I mean, do you know yet, or is it, is it they have their own? I mean, obviously, we're going to have fees for that as well.
Right, yeah. And part of the fees, and kind of like what we do at the rec center right now, whenever somebody uses it, you know, there's a certain fee. And I think it's 3% and 30 cents per transaction, I think that's what it is. So that would be something that, you know, if we decided to go with that, that would be a cost that we, and right now, we do that too, we take that fee.
But is it, does Civic Plus manage that? I mean, do they have their own processing, or do we get to select how it's processed?
Both. We get to decide, or they have their own.
So we could shop a vendor that gives us the best price?
Absolutely, yes. Yep. And that's what, if this passes, that's what I played on doing to try to get us the best deal for that. Yeah.
I mean, honestly, in today's world, the more types of payments we can accept, I mean, if we could take, you know, PayPal and Stripe and credit cards and all those things. It's, we're, we're 15 years behind here.
Yeah, we, we really are. And we just want to be able to try to offer, you know, again, the best customer service possible, and not being able to offer, you know, things online, it's, we're not being able to meet that goal for them. So, you're exactly right, Kelly.
Are we currently paying the old service too?
Uh, for our, like, in-person stuff right now? Is that what you're talking about, Jerry?
Well, the service that we have been using for 20 years, or is that?
So that expires, that expires in February, and that service was only like $300 a year. So you can tell what we're getting out of it is not, exactly.
You're getting our money for this, right?
Yes, yes. And we have.
Hello, this is Brian, a couple of questions if I could. So with this program, we'd be able to be a little bit more efficient, right?
Absolutely, yes. Not only for the customer, but internally as well, both, yep.
And internal efficiencies, would that mean less, perhaps less, less staff time, perhaps less payroll, or no?
Potentially, yeah. And being able to use our staff in other areas where we, you know, maybe we are lacking. So instead of, you know, Lori and Shannon doing so many handwritten reports, you know, we can have them in different areas of our department, you know, doing certain things too. So, yeah.
Because I know a fair amount of your staff is part-time, right?
Correct, yeah. So we only have three really full-time, four if you count our overnight custodian, managing all of those different facilities as full-time people, yeah.
And not that I want to necessarily take hours away from part-time staff, but if, if your full-time staff is more efficient doing this sort of thing, they might be able to reduce some of that, that part-time staff hours, is that right?
Exactly, yeah.
Okay, gotcha.
Yep.
Data from this entire program would be available to the entire city complex. So we could use the data that we derive from all this for other adventures that we're going to get into, let's see, the way, putting possibly a golf course. Let's see, whether we're putting possibly a golf course.
There are many benefits. The town of Normal, they obviously operate Ironwood. And I've kind of been looking around the website and they're able to utilize Civic Rec for their golf course as well, if that were ever to happen with us. There are a lot of functionalities that would transfer over with that too.
Kelly mentioned 15 years behind and this is not the first time that Taylor's made a pitch for this, that many budget cycles had got stopped. I wanted him to have an appreciation for green ledgers the way I did, but it's not working anymore.
Well, Chief Wolford, he said that we can put it underneath his budget since he's doing so well. He actually just texted me that. So thank you, Chief Wolford.
Does space want to defunding?
Is there any other questions? What's that, Jerry?
New police training centers at the rec center now, right?
Right, right.
Having heard all this and notwithstanding the chief's kind offer or whatnot, if we want to go ahead with this, we should actually have a motion.
I'd make a motion. Jerry?
Jerry, make some motion and we have a second by.
I'll second, Kelly.
Second. And you need to unmute for the roll call. Please unmute and share it for the roll call.
Okay, thanks.
Roll call please.
Yes.
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 Rachel?
Yes.
Myers?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Lori?
Yes.
Barr?
Yes.
Dobbin Lee?
Yes.
My boss?
Yes.
Thank you, Council. Appreciate it.
Moving on, we have Mayor's comments. Well, I could have a ton. I'd really like to say the fireworks were great on the 31st. It was a nice display, a way to, nice way to bang out the year. I've had several calls and emails on the lights, on the downtown and around the ice rink and everything, how gorgeous it is. And the pictures on the web of, you know, some drawing pictures and whatnot. It's fabulous, gorgeous. And I think we should all be proud of all the work that's been put on by the streets department and maintenance department and all the staff that's done such a great job. I'd also like to throw out big congratulations for all the work they did this past weekend with the ice storm. Chris, I don't know if you're listening, but the guys did a fabulous job. I've been getting nothing but compliments the last two days, like it's going out of style. And sometimes I get calls that are compliments, but this has just been great. So the guys did a great job. Please pass it on to all of them. We really appreciate the hard work and that you've put in and and got the guys up, really doing a great job. I know there's more to do, but so far they're just fabulous.
Thank you. I'll let them know. It was a long weekend.
Thank Mother Nature for not cranking up the wind to about 25 miles an hour.
Exactly. We'd still be cutting.
Also, Taylor, I think the ice rink is probably the most popular thing of the holiday season. I think the staff there has done a great job. I've been by about half a dozen times and every time I've been by, the people are just really great. And they're it's just a fantastic thing.
Right. Appreciate it.
Other than that, city council comments?
Yes, sir. I've got a couple of questions. One pertains to accident state highway through town, Route 116, Olive Street. It's getting a terrible disrepair. Brian, is that, you know, has the state got that on the list of work to be done in the near future?
Bill, I, I'm not sure right now. At one time, they were looking at redoing that through here. I'd have to go back and look at their program to see if it's still scheduled and when that would be. I'm, I'm not sure offhand.
Okay, appreciate that. It's getting pretty bad. The other one that I, I mentioned to Bob a few weeks ago, now that the state's pretty much done with, with Route 55 going through town and the traffic, you know, back opened up. Deerfield Road has taken a tremendous hit with the traffic cutting, not following the detour signs, but finding their own way through town on Route 1800 by CAT and then the Deerfield Road parallel by 55. And I know it's not their responsibility, but I think we ought to contact the state. They, they forced a lot of traffic on us that we're going to be paying that repair cost in the near future, the way it's took a beating. And I didn't know how to get that ball started, so I just played it up. Another, Brian?
Bill, when that, you know, you've talked, you and I have talked before and, and I brought that up to the state and the RE that was on the job. And, you know, one of the issues out there, and I, I don't disagree that there was a lot of truck traffic. But what, but we didn't have it posted to not be a route. So it's a little bit tough to get the state to take any action on that at this time. I can continue to have some conversations, but initially that was kind of their position that we, there was, you know, they were legal loads on that road.
Put that on the list of streetlights that I've been trying to get.
Yeah, I'll add it to the list.
Thank you.
Just gotta say, welcome aboard, Frank.
Thank you.
You know what you've gotten yourself into?
Bill sugarcoated it for me. I mean, he made it sound like this was the greatest thing in town.
Did inquire about recounts? I don't know exactly what his reference was there, but.
Well, it's great to have you aboard. I know you'll, you'll do a great job.
Well, I, I have been on several boards in the community and my, my usual plan is to be quiet for a while and then as I get to see the lay of the land, ask a few questions.
Well, I'm sure you'll do fine.
Welcome, Frank. Bill Callis.
Thank you.
Same here, Frank. It's Mike Barr. I'm also relatively new to this thing and I've tried desperately to keep my mouth shut, but I can't.
Welcome, Frank. It's Don.
Thanks, Dixie. Some of these guys I've known most of my life. I mean, I've known Kurt a long time and Don Hicks and Bill Alvey and
Welcome aboard, Frank.
I've just known them a long time. Kelly. So it's, I, my, my comment to Bill was when he started talking to me about it was the old Groucho Marx line that I didn't know if I wanted to be a part of an organization that wanted me as part of that organization.
Thanks again.
Thank you.
We talked about last being the budget cycle with uncertainty. I think we're making some direction in the next week about whether or not we're going to get loosening of our restrictions or not. So once we do, we'll have a clearer picture. But I guess the question that I would have is if, if there is no change for, let's say, the next 30 days in terms of the number of people that we can have, is it your preference to have smaller groups in person reviewing the budget? Or doing this sort of format?
I like in-person better if we can do it. Even in small groups.
I agree, in-person's got to be better. Agreed here too.
We could have committee of the haves, but we have not in this case. All right, we'll see what he says and then we'll start putting a schedule together. So maybe one in the morning or in the day, one at night to help accommodate schedule. So we'll work on that.
Bob, do we have to, I mean, if there are committee that should be open to the public, do we just zoom those of us who are in the room or how, how does that work? I mean, if we're all together?
Yeah, we're all going to work all together. So I think that if we historically, our committee of the halls haven't drawn a crowd. One thing that we could do is look at perhaps recording them and putting them up on YouTube. So we'll work through that.
As far as public comment goes, we've had a few. Some have been actually signed. I had a comment that we could use our money better than buying a golf course. And I explained to them where our money has to go and different things. So and we also had, I read a lengthy email from Lipinski's, which we'll be addressing at some point here on various questions that have already been covered in some form or another. Most of the comments I've been getting, I tried to get them to email them in so we could put them in the record. And so far they declined the opportunity to speak publicly. So we'll go from there. But anybody's welcome to submit a comment. We'd be glad to express them. Whether they're, you know, favorable or unfavorable, that's just the way life is sometimes. Other than that, I need to speak to Alan tomorrow sometime, if he's available.
Well, I'm going to be over, meeting with Bob tomorrow morning to look at some documents we've probably around 9:30.
Other than that, we need a motion to adjourn. Motion by Don Willie and seconded by Joe Hinni. And by affirmation, we are adjourned. Thank you.